Good evening. My name is Lucy Bisson and I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. Welcome here this evening, and I would like to call the meeting to order. And if Christine will call the roll, please.
Roger Dupre.
Here.
Joshua Najin.
Here.
Michael Marcot.
Present.
Shannon Cox.
Here.
Lucy Bisson.
Here.
Myself, Christine Kittredge. Amy Smith.
Here.
And our new associate member, Alex Pine.
Here.
Okay, so we've been asked to change things up a little bit on the agenda. Well, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Yes, we want to do the planning, the disposition of 860 Lisbon Street first before the LCIP. And correspondence, we have an article on homelessness provided by a member of the public. And I will enter into the correspondence, an email that I received last night from Bruce Damon, who is the Chair of the School Board, that I distributed to all of the members of the Planning Board and staff prior to this meeting. Public hearings, we have none, and so other business. So a Planning Board recommendation to the City Council on the disposition of 860 Lisbon Street, Martell School. Excuse me, Shelley.
Yes, good evening. So before you this evening is the disposition or sale of 860 Lisbon Street, which is the former Martell School building. It's a 3.2 acre parcel, which the School Department conveyed to the city in 2019. It is located in the office residential zone. And at a work session on January 10th of this year, the Council and Planning Board members agreed to rezone this property to the community business zone that's likely to take place later this spring, so that hasn't happened yet. There is an interest to purchase this property for $400,000 by Dave Gendron. His plan would be to demolish the building and to build new development on site. The purchase includes the requirement that the city pay for the asbestos abatement costs and disposal fees of the demolition debris, but not for any of the demolition cost itself. At this point, no use has been determined for the building based on discussions with Dave. It's likely to be a mixed-use development with some market rate housing provided on site. We did provide in your packet a memo from the Fire Chief explaining why he does not feel that the site would be ideal for a future fire station location. And then we also have Lincoln Jeffers here from Economic Development, if you have any questions. He also had a memo that he provided. If you'd like to talk about your memo, feel free.
Good evening. Lincoln Jeffers, Development Director for the city. And this property has been in play since 2019, when we put a request for proposals on the street, asking various people what ideas they might have for it. We had both the Share Center, who was a tenant in the building at the time, Gendron put in an offer, and a combination of Avesta and Lewiston Housing Authority put in a proposal. I believe it was 125,000 is what Avesta and Lewiston Housing was willing to pay, but they were going to be doing some senior housing there, which is what the Council at the time preferred, wanted to see, even though it'd see less revenue to the city, they thought the use would be the preferred use. Unfortunately, while they, Avesta and Lewiston Housing did apply for and receive low-income housing tax credits, they had to give them back. In large measure, that's attributable to COVID driving up construction costs and supply chain issues. There's a rule with low-income housing tax credits that says you need to spend them within two years, have people actually living in the properties, and because of those issues, they just didn't think they'd be able to deliver it. So they gave them back to the federal government. The option on that expired, which made it available again. Dave Gendron has continued to knock on my door a couple times a year, just saying, hey, if that doesn't go, I've got an interest in doing it. And basically, his original proposal remained the same. He'd like to see it go. So the reason we're before you tonight is, at this point, asking for a recommendation, the one that you originally had made back when Avesta-Lewiston Housing did it, has expired, and we're asking for a recommendation from the Planning Board again for the Council to take action on. It's a 3.2 acre site. If you would like, I can address some of the issues that were raised by Mr. Damon.
Yes, I would like that very much, Mr. Jeffers, please.
Okay.
I was going to bring them up anyway, so.
Fair enough. First of all, the fact that the Martell family might have a lingering interest in the property, it actually was conveyed to the city by the Franklin Property Trust. So, to my knowledge, I could find nothing in the record how Franklin acquired it, but it did come Franklin Property Trust. Two out of the three, excuse me, two out of the four deeds referenced a deed restriction that the building needed to be used for a school site. The fourth deed negated the other deed restriction, so it's an open plate. There are no restrictions on use of the property. Mr. Damon had mentioned 75 Park Street is sort of sitting in the pipeline, unused, and actually just sold. It's going to be owned by a young couple who grew up in Maine, have worked around the country for a variety of groups. That's Danielle Snow and Derek, draw a blank on his last name, but they're married, Derek Ribbons. And Danielle was part of Grand Rounds, which was one of her success stories down at the Bates Mill complex. She has left that company. That company has merged with a couple of others at this point, but Derek and Danielle are both very entrepreneurial. They now own the building, they're looking to redevelop it, put it into productive use, largely as a kind of a co-working space on steroids, both bringing their own expertise and entrepreneurial zeal to helping train people, and have a variety of uses theirs. So at least 75 Park Street is back in productive use. The Violations Bureau never went out of productive use. It's been leased by the court, or the police, or the state police, and I don't know the nuances of it, but I believe it is, it's still occupied and will be. So Bates 5, yeah, that's been a challenge, and that one, but I don't put this in the same category. This one, we've been trying to get it redeveloped since 2019. We had an option put together that was going gangbusters, they retreated from it, and at this point, Council said, let's put it back. So it looks like you're ready to ask.
Oh, yeah. You know, I mean, he may have offered 400,000, but, you know, we're supposed to pay, you and I, well, not you, you don't live in Lewiston. You know, citizens of Lewiston are supposed to pay for the asbestos abatement and for dumping this demolition.
The demolition debris.
I don't think that's a good deal. I really, really don't. I think that, you know, if he really wants this property, then he should pay more for it. You know, we shouldn't be paying for the asbestos or the demolition if he's only given us 400,000. That's my opinion.
And it is, you are welcome to it.
Absolutely.
And the, and that can, if you like, that can be part of the recommendation of the Council. Generally, the Planning Board's role is, should this building be sold or not? It shouldn't be.
I realize that, but.
It should not be the details.
But we have made comments regarding, you know, sales prices and stuff to the City Council. They don't listen to us, but we.
But that's why I actually included the details in my memo, because I anticipated those questions were going to be coming. A nuance of that is the city's limitation, exposure is limited to 400,000. Hopefully, it would be less than that. I have been doing some homework on how much asbestos remains in the building. The fact that it was a school building means most of the asbestos was removed over the course of its utilization. I do not have my hands on a report yet, but I talked to the former facilities manager at the School Department, who said, like, anything that was visible to the kids, or the kids could have any access to, including the mechanical room, where you typically will see asbestos on pipes and whatnot, he says, all that stuff's been removed. He was looking for the report, I don't yet have it, and it's probably, it's probably five, six, seven, 10 years old anyway, so there is a Phase 1 report, which would need to be done, and those will be done on Mr. Gendron's part. The oil tank was the other thing, and I actually checked the state record at the Maine DEP, and there were oil tanks on site, but I've got a record showing it was removed. So that exposure is limited. So while it's 400,000 is what we'd be paid, we do have the cost of demolition debris, and whatever asbestos may remain, but it's capped at 400,000, that's the worst case. We should net something.
Well, then we don't net anything. Then we're giving him this piece of land.
Well, I'm saying that our exposure is capped at 400,000.
I realize that, but I'm saying if it's, if it costs us 400,000 for abatement and for demolition debris, then, and he gives us, basically, he gives us in one hand, and then he ta, you know, we give it back to him in the other.
If those costs total that, you're absolutely correct.
I don't think that's a good deal. Okay, so does anybody on the board want to speak with, to ask questions to Mr. Jeffers? Yes, Mr. Dupre.
Mr. Jeffers, has any other consideration been made for the use of that property?
I'm not sure what you mean, as far as.
Well, according to Bruce's memo, the thing is, is that Dingly Building is in desperate need of repair, which is going to be enormous. And where the city already owns that piece of property, why wouldn't that be a consideration for them to put the school staff that's there now into that location?
The building itself is not usable.
No, I realize that. I mean, what they're going to do is they're going to excavate the building anyways. So by putting up a new building, you're not purchasing land, which the city already owns, so the cost is going to be minimal in regards to the cost of repairing the Dingly Building versus going into a new structure, which would be accommodating, you know, the whole School Department plus whatever else that they need.
Yeah, and I would suggest, actually, the Martell School needs to come, so it would be the demolition plus the cost of whatever new construction. And I will also say, the first myself or the city administrator has heard of the School Department's interest in this was in Mr. Damon's email. We had suggested, as we were taking 75 Park Street, one of the things we thought might be a use for that was 75 Park Street, it'd be close to Dingly, and they looked at it and said that was not an option, they were interested in. To my knowledge, there was never any interest expressed on the Martell site. So, I mean, we, it was literally.
Right.
It was in an email this morning from the School Board Chair.
Josh?
So I just want to make a couple of comments, as well as ask a couple of questions. First, on 75 Park Street, I believe we purchased that for 415,000 and then sold it back to the, to the new owners for 315,000, so that was.
Add 100 on both sides, but yes.
Okay, so 500.
Yeah, it was 100,000.
So that was a net loss of basically 20% of our investment. The property hasn't actually really been in play, because Avesta actually had a plan for it, up until the Council decided not to move forward with the proposal from Avesta. One of the things that kind of stands out in my mind is that there's a project in my neighborhood, Saxon Partners, which was just extended for another five years on a TIF for, you know, a hopeful build. By transferring this property over without making sure that we've talked to potential developers, I mean, even thinking like an economic development plan that could be packaged for a particular developer, we may be missing opportunities. That stands out. And just as a quick note, I understand it's not the purview of the Planning Board to make determinations for what's going to happen with a city-owned property when it sells, but it is our job to determine the highest and best use of spaces. So I just, in all, in all fairness, there's a lot of questions I have as to why we're not, why we're moving so quickly on something that we could get possibly a higher and better use out of. And the question that I have is, does, can anybody tell me, when we demo the property, what the unimproved lot produces in revenues, tax revenues for the city? Like, how much are we going to be collecting on 3.2 acres of land that's, nothing's on? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I do not. I mean, I would suggest, well, not a lot of money.
Just reading through the packet, you know, there was a concern that we wanted to move this from, you know, from city-held property to, to a taxable property, but if nothing's going to be built on it, you know, I guess the question is, how much is it? And the reason why I ask that is directly, two directions from that property, there's maybe 80 acres of pavement that could easily be developed into all kinds of different things, so. But yeah, so those are, that's, those are my comments and my question, which I don't know if we could get an answer to tonight, but I would, I would be interested in finding out how much revenue we'd be collecting in taxes on an unimproved lot on that side.
I could, I don't want to do it on my phone this second, but we can certainly get it for you.
Okay.
Michael?
Just a comment, being familiar with the purchase of like-size, actually even smaller parcels across four different states, this is a prime piece of property. In the private sector, you'd see this go for more than a million dollars, and the developer would be responsible for all of the costs. I'm familiar with a particular entity that goes into depressed areas and buys depressed properties and makes something new out of it. But all of the costs are borne by the developer, not the previous owner, whether that be a private entity or a public entity. Most time, in my case, it's a private entity, which is probably the reason, because it seems that public entities are too willing to, like I just heard from Member McGee, selling, buying property for a certain price and selling it for 20% loss. So I have real high run over there, especially since I was on the Council, that negotiated this deal to keep a facade and recreation space. And at the time, when it came back to the Council after an election cycle, there was some real concern over, I'm losing my train of thought here, but yeah, there wasn't much desire for those sentiments after it had been negotiated by the previous Council, and so I see where this is going. I don't know why this, if Avesta's totally divested itself of it, and not simply that their option expired and the City Council decided not to renew, then it should probably go out to an RFP and see if the private sector is interested in this parcel, who would give us much more, and we'd know what the plans are, what is it that they want to develop there? That was one of the big concerns, three years ago, if I have the number of years correct, was that there was no understanding whether this would simply be a prospecting issue. And, and of course, according to our plan, elderly housing is something that we need to address, and this was a perfect situation. I mean, it was great all the way around. We negotiated the green space, the facade, we're going to get 44 units, if I remember reading that right, of elder housing, particularly mobile, mobily challenged elderly, and especially coming off of the debate we had about the corner of Webster and East Avenue, Mr. Willet's property. And where that was turned down, this would have been great. I have no reason not to, again, train of thought. I'd be more than happy to extend an option to Avesta, and you know that I haven't been a huge fan of such entity. But when good projects come down the road, and highest and best use is involved, and like, it's been mentioned here tonight, this particular property could be used for a new administrative building for the School Department, so that we don't have to go out and overpay for a privately-owned lot for it, like we have for fire stations. We pay premium for those lots, but apparently, we don't sell premium for our lots. That's a real serious issue. So that's my stop speech.
Shannon?
Thank you. I recognize in the motion that's being asked of the Planning Board tonight, that we're making a motion specifically to make a recommendation for the disposition, but all of the preamble in the materials that we've been offered is specific about what that disposition would be for and to whom. And I do struggle with that as a disconnect. If asked to support this motion as written, I would. That is incredibly prime piece of property. We're asked to be guided by the comprehensive plan, and if you look at the legacy Lewiston, and to Mr. Najin's point, that intersection and the amount of pavement in that intersection was re-envisioned as a walkable neighborhood with mixed use, with added housing, that was really remarkable, and starts to develop the sense of singular neighborhoods within a cohesive plan for the city. I would encourage you to look at that page, because it really, really does tell a story, and one anchor tenant being really thoughtful about the redevelopment of that intersection could set that intersection, where we have had a high number of pedestrian deaths, on a new trajectory for our city as a whole. And as a Planning Board member who envisions my kids raising their kids here, hopefully walking in that neighborhood, that's the kind of vision that I'm planning for. With all of that said, I am concerned that we aren't looking at it through the lens of highest and best use and our best option. Our real estate market here has been noted by developers across the state and from outside of the state, and the mentality of what's possible, what the market will bear, and what interest looks like, has changed significantly in three years, and we would be shortsighted not to act on that opportunity and invite Mr. Gendron and any other developer who has an active interest in putting in mixed use with housing into that space, and those would be the two riders that I would put on it, is really important. And while I would love to see housing for our elderly, I'd love to see market-rate housing, love to see affordable housing, I think one building could do that. I think any one of those could spur additional development in that same area, and anything that starts to do that starts to address the low vacancy that we have, that would support some of the concerns for our homeless community members as well, right? So I'd love to see that kind of development. I'm concerned with the history of a net economic loss while trying to maintain site control for a planful future, which I support, and I don't mind taking a loss when there's a purpose for it. I just want to see that there's a purpose here, and that we're giving our city the best opportunity to be recognized for the development investments that it is, and not selling ourselves short. And it feels like this action being requested of us as written has a disconnect from the content that was provided to offer context around the action. So while I'd recommend it to City Council, I would encourage them to put, to work with a real estate agent and to put it out for other developers to be interested in, and I would love to see Mr. Gendron, who has invested for generations in our community, to be one of those to contribute.
Christine? Okay, Amy?
I don't have anything to add, but I agree with everyone. I think we're selling ourselves short if we just dispose of it the minute we're able to, for the first person who puts in a bid.
Alex, would you like to make some comments?
I'll just echo what Amy and Shannon both said about the property, that it seems like it would be worthwhile to reevaluate it based on our current market conditions and the location of the property.
Okay. David?
I just wanted, to Josh's question, the assessors have the property valued at $260,000 right now? 260,000, 250, and if I did the math right, that's a little over $7,000 for taxes.
That's the land value or?
Just the land value.
Just the land value, okay.
Nice work. Okay, thank you, Mr. Jeffers. I don't know if you have any other, you know, comments or concerns that you've expressed with us?
No, I've heard, I've heard all of yours, and, no.
Okay. David, I realize this is not a public session. Can I still open it up to the public?
That's, that's up to you. You don't have to, but it's up to you.
Okay, I see a number of people in the audience who might have some concerns and comments, so I will reiterate that if you would come up to the podium, I will open up to the public. You get to speak once, come up to the podium, give your name and address, whether you're a citizen of Lewiston or not, and you will have three minutes to speak, and you don't get to come back, okay? So I will open it up to the public, and if anyone would like to speak, I'd like you to come up to the podium.
Hello, my name's Chris Kilmari. I'm the Executive Director of Lewiston Housing, and I'm a resident of Portland. I was going to give a quick background on how we got here tonight, but Link did a good job of explaining originally that we did have to give back our tax credits due to COVID-related issues. I would like to say, though, that we did not retreat from this option, and we're here tonight to ask for our option to be extended. The reality is, we were under the impression our, our option would be extended. I was a little surprised when I got a call saying that our option wouldn't be extended. We were waiting, there were issues related to the Share Center being in there, where we couldn't buy the building. I had offered to buy the building earlier on, but couldn't do so because the right verbiage was not in their lease to provide us the protections we needed. If we bought it while they were there, shortly after they left, I was told that our option wouldn't be extended, and that likely it was going to be going over to Gendron at that point in time. The highest and best use of that property is clearly housing. We're in the bit, in the middle of our biggest housing crisis we've ever been in. We did have issues coming out of the ground with that property, but the last two and a half years have not been a normal two and a half years. Everything changed, and right when we started to get back on track, interest rates went through the roof, and main housing went from having more money than they knew what to do with, to having no money at all and closing the 4% program, and basically saying, it's going to be four, four to five years to come back on track. And I understand the city's disappointment in us being transparent about that with them and extending our, our option. But we did offer the ability to buy the property, take it off your books, take the capital improvements and the concerns that you guys had off the table with a clawback provision, saying if we didn't get the property built within a certain amount of time, that you guys would get the property back. We did have to ask for that to be extended a little bit because of our concerns about the 4% program and not opening back up. That said, timelines look a lot more positive these days. There's, the governor, for the first time ever, has put money in the budget for affordable housing for the 4% and 9% programs. It's a really good sign. Things seem to be getting back on track now, and I feel confident that we'll be able to get that property out of the ground in some way, shape, or form in the next couple of years. But these deals take time to put together, and we are at square one, but that doesn't change the fact that a gas station or a, or a commercial property is going to help solve any of our problems of having particularly senior housing in, in the neighborhoods, and not just downtown, but in other areas around the city as well. Meadowview, our other property, which is 50 years old, is the only senior housing outside of the downtown of the city right now. And the other, I love that everyone wants to talk about market-rate housing going in in different places, but the reality is, Lewiston isn't in a place right now for, for market-rate housing to be built. The rents that we can drive right now do not support the debt, they just don't. There's, it's not going to, it's not going to happen. I would love to be able to build it, we're building some as part of choice, but that is only because we got a $30 million grant from HUD to be able to pay, to be able to cover those costs associated with the market-rate units.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Ronnie Parity, 82 Prospect Avenue, Lewiston. And I was here in 2019 in front of the chamber to ask for their support for senior housing. I am a senior. I'm 74 years old. I like to see senior housing up in our area. The only senior housing, like he said, is Meadowview. Everything is going downtown. I've talked to seniors, they don't want to live downtown, you know, and I know you guys are all for Tree Street, and I. You know, and I know you guys are all for tree street and I agree with that. But we need senior housing. And again, going along with the comprehensive plan, we need that. It's great. It's on the bus line. Shaws is near there. There's walking sidewalks. It's great for seniors. The bank's down the thing. You've got the mall across the street. It would be really great for seniors. You know what that used to be? My tell school in the back when I was young was ice skating rink in the wintertime. And that's another thing I'm going to say to you, we don't have things, places for kids to go either. We used to have skating rinks all over the city in the wintertime and places for things. People that grew up here know that. And we gave to seniors, yes, the seniors lived downtown when I was young, but they kept the houses nice. We need senior housing, please. They can't afford to live. I know seniors who eat cat food and dog food. I know seniors who have to choose between meds and housing. Okay, I'm a nurse and I've been out there. I know what's out there. And I've been all over the tree streets and everything like that. And you need to look at the seniors. The seniors won't come out and talk because they're too proud. Okay? Please do not recommend this to be sold to development like Gendron. He will make it a parking lot.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Grand Mason. I lived at 831 Lisbon Street years ago. That's where I grew up. And now I see that you're going to give that property away, but I'm going to tell you something. In the late 1960s, early 70s, a man used to come while my father was mowing the lawn. And he'd tell him, he wanted to buy his house. And my father say, get out of here. He thought he was a crackpot. Came a second time and same thing. So the third time, my father was a man of his word. And so he told him, if you want to buy my property, you get here Saturday morning with $50,000 in cash and I'll sell it to you. And he kept his word and it went to Burger King. And his lot wasn't half the size of that, maybe even just a quarter of the size of that. So that, why would we sell that property for just that amount of money? And then I'm a member, I was a past member of the Alliance for Retired Americans. We citizens of Lewiston that live on the outskirts have paid taxes over and over again to the city of Lewiston for all other things. But when it comes to senior housing, where are you? Meadowview is old, it's dilapidating, there's a lot of issues with it. How you're letting people that are older go into all sorts of housing, but they don't want to be mixed up with young people and stuff. They want their own place. And I think you're too much in a hurry to make a decision about selling the property in the first place. And then some people know how to do the math and other people don't. Wasn't going to end up paying for giving him the lot. And I agree with the chairman. We need to put this out there. And you haven't given enough time for anybody else to come forward. But senior housing is what we need in Lewiston. And that's what I'm going to fight for.
Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Richard Grand Mason. That's my wife who just spoke. The citizens of Lewiston, most of us are senior citizens, especially in the outline areas. Some of these people have been living in those facilities for 30 years, 40 years. They don't want to move downtown. They like the area they're at. So, you know, you need to take into consideration that. The cost of housing out there is not affordable for most of those seniors. So you got to take that into account. So please do the right thing. That is a fantastic facility for senior housing. I mean, walking to the bank right next door, go to the crate union, you know, it's all right there. So let's take that into consideration. I think that's a primary thing. And besides, after the fires in downtown that burnt down how many apartment houses? How long has it taken to actually replace all of those? They haven't been replaced, let's be honest. It takes time. So let's give time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep. No, no, that's fine. Make your way.
Hi, I'm Amy Sanchez. I live on Pine Street. I also run a few different nonprofits, so I talk to people every day and see my neighbors every day. And I agree, the older citizens need a place to go that's theirs. I do not see the logic in selling a piece of property to someone for $400,000 when we cap out our expenses at $400,000. That is not good economics, I'm sorry. Anybody who can do math can figure that out. And it especially seems like the city council, which I know is not your responsibility, but it seems that they like to push that the city doesn't want to spend their money on this or spend their money on that. Well, here's your chance to make money and you're not doing it. And you're not looking for better alternatives. So I just want to urge you guys to recommend that they take their time and find alternative uses and alternative buyers. There's got to be something that benefits more than just this proposal right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public motion, bring it back to the board. Any more discussion? Any more questions? Yes, Christine?
This is why I waited. I wanted to hear from everybody first before I had my thoughts. But now it sounds to me like, it doesn't sound to me like Avesta has backed away from this. And certainly we were supportive of that plan originally. So I guess I first just have a question of, like, is it an option for us to recommend that that? I know that their option was not extended, but can we recommend they repursue that?
Certainly, yeah. If you folks want to place any, you know, conditions, so to speak, along with your recommendation to the council, you can do that.
Okay. So that would personally be my leaning is to repursue the plan that we approved in the first place. And if that's not the feeling of the rest of the board, I would much rather us do an RFP again than just sell this to be torn down.
Okay. Amy? Okay.
I have a clarifying question about her comments.
Sure, go ahead and I'll go that way this time.
Thanks.
Are those two options mutually exclusive? And this is a process point for Mr. Jeffers and Mr. Hediger, I think. Shelley chiming in. But if we opt to dispose with writing recommendations, because I don't think we can actually make more than that at this point, is there a significant difference between looking at additional options, which could include any updated or continuing options from Lewiston Housing, whether they are doing it with Avesta or not, it's a whole separate thing? So it would be LHA specifically. How different or mutually exclusive is it to say with like a full suite of options to be considered, which might include bids or plans with LHA or additional developers, including and beyond Gendron? Is that, could that be both of what she offered as one? Is that not the same thing? Want me to take another stab at that link? Your forehead tells me it needs it.
Let me tell you what I think you just said.
Sure, let's do it.
Is if the planning board were to send a positive recommendation, it would be with the caveat that you encouraged, that you approved the sale of the property, but you would encourage the council to consider a whole variety of options, including extending the option with Lewiston Housing and Avesta, as well as any other developers that may want to come forth with a proposal. Is that what you meant?
Yeah, and yes, and I guess I'm also clarifying with Ms. Kittredge that that's not. I'm not sure that there is a tiered approach that I heard you say, which would necessarily be my approach, frankly. I would like to see a full consideration of all options through the blend of economic impact as well as societal planning goals for housing and some of the needs expressed in the room tonight. It's okay if you don't like it, but is it clear that time? Was that understood that time?
I'm not sure that needed a response or nothing.
Yeah.
I heard what you said. I didn't think it was something to respond to.
Josh?
I would propose that we actually table a vote on this. I believe by charter it's 60 days is what we can do. But table a vote on this until some of these concerns have been answered. If we give a recommendation, whether it's positive or negative, the council can still move forward on whatever they'd like to do. If we do table the motion for like, let's say 60 days, that gives some time for people to come forward with plans and proposals that could possibly end up having this property developed in a different manner or developed at all.
David and Shelley linked to, can we table it?
I think it would be a continuing and you'd continue it to either the next meeting or a date certain. But I'd suggest, I guess maybe to Josh's point, what's the purpose of the continuation? Some of the questions that, I'm not sure what the questions are. So if there are, if there's a reason for a continuing, it would be helpful for staff to know specifically what it is that we can provide you folks at that next meeting.
Shannon?
To Josh's point, I'm not sure that your desired outcome for additional time, for additional considerations and other developers or other options to reveal themselves could necessarily be met by a continuance. Whereas the disposition of the property and recommendation for it being treated to a full real estate development assessment, marketing and development options is where. And I think even whether you prefer Mr. Gendron's plan or not, part of what was represented to us is without knowing that there is site control or site access, it's hard to put together a development package. And so I'm not sure that you wouldn't have an unintended consequence with that approach. I'm not sure, but wanted to name that.
I can hear that. I still would, so there's, we can continue to such a date, correct? For up to 60 days?
No, I just want to clarify. So in Appendix A, Article 7, Planning Board, Section 3, states that any request for recommendation by the city council shall be acted upon within 30 days of the request, except as otherwise provided for by statute or ordinance or unless a longer period is specified by the city council.
So we could move it to the second meeting of February?
February, the 28th.
I mean, I don't know when the request itself was made, so I think it would probably be the February 13th meeting.
Can we determine that?
Saying 30 days from when the request was made.
Right.
Right, because of the storm, because this should have been at our meeting two weeks ago, on the 19th.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third was the original.
I would still, I would still move to continue it to allow at least a little bit of time for folks that may be interested, including Avesta or Main Housing to come forward with.
LHA. Lewiston Housing.
Lewiston Housing, excuse me. To come forward with a proposal that might be more beneficial or work a little better than us spending up to $400,000 to sell a property for $400,000 with no guarantee of a development.
Did you allow us to say something, please?
My only question, and I get the direction you're going, is how does the school department's request enter in what you're? Because they wouldn't necessarily be submitting an option or a proposal on the open market. That would be my only wrinkle in your dialogue.
Shannon?
It doesn't. Of highest and best use that we've heard here today and that I can think about through the lens of commercial or societal benefit for the city of Lewiston, it is not administrative offices for our school department. And respectfully with more kids than I feel like I can count some days in our public school system, there is property in the Franklin pasture. The Longley complex has the ability to be built up, built out, or for those mobile homes to be removed. There is a playground that is seldom used by young children who are no longer served on that property. And I don't think a full and comprehensive search of administrative, not academic space has been done in our city. And I don't think that's it.
I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Josh? Did you want to say?
No.
So, all right, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
Okay.
What's your motion?
So I am making a motion to continue this until the next.
Planning board meeting, which is?
On February 13th.
Because we don't have, we were not given a calendar yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have them here.
Okay. I know, but I asked for calendars because it's. Well, at least you can plan ahead for the whole year, you know, you put it on your calendar. No, that's fine. No, no, that's fine. So our next planning board meeting would be the 13th.
Right.
Okay.
I think that has to go into the motion as well.
Okay.
So, and that would, so the continuance.
Till the February 13th?
Yes.
Planning board meeting?
In order to see if there is any other proposal that would come forward for development.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, Alex?
Quick question. What is the requirement for the amount of time between a submission or a request for approval and when it gets considered by this board?
It varies.
Okay, because if we move, if we extend this to the 13th, that's 20 days from the meeting that it was scheduled to be at. And I just want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's here. That if it was submitted, you know, more than 10 days before that meeting was scheduled, then that's not kosher.
I don't expect that it was submitted that long. We're going to go with that because we don't, we don't know the exact date that the city council submitted it to us.
Yeah, I would suggest we go by the date that you folks were asked to actually act upon it.
Right, which was the 9th. And since we had the snowstorm, it's being considered the 23rd. So 30 days from the 9th would be the next, our next meeting would be the 13th.
It was the 23rd.
Yeah, I hope it's the 23rd because we can't get our 30 days in between the 9th and the 13th.
Yeah, the 23rd was the snow date.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. No.
Yes, because it was moved a week.
Oh, it was moved just a week, yes, I'm sorry, okay, all right, so.
We're really out of luck if it was the 9th.
Okay. All right, so.
Whole conversation's moot then.
Yes, Lincoln?
Just one quick thing which Shannon had touched upon lightly and I probably was missing, not including in my comments. It's part of the reason Gendron doesn't have a full blown proposal is people don't, until they have site control, they can't sell it. So even though I know where the board's heading and I'm not looking to dissuade, I just want to make the point that we put a request for proposals. It's highly unlikely somebody's going to have a fully cooked plant that I'm going to stick a macaroni grill on that site because they've never even heard of it. It takes time to get site control to then pitch it and get it out to the broader public, approach your tenants, your potential tenants. So just have that as background, which Shannon did a nice job of touching upon lightly. I just wanted to reinforce, that's the reality of it.
So what's the rush?
Yeah. Why do we want to sell it tomorrow for $400,000 to somebody who doesn't know what they're going to do there yet?
Well, I am, let me, years ago, I helped write an annual report and the guy I worked with said, you know, the general who wanted a certain tree planted in his garden and his gardener told him, that's not going to bloom for 100 years. And the general replied, well, you better plant it today then. The city is often accused of not seeing development, not pursuing it. So here we have someone who's looking to do something. So here we have someone who's, who's looking to do something, has been waiting since 2019, let things play it out, ultimately, unfortunately, things did not come to fruition with Lewiston Housing and Avesta. The opportunity was there, council is willing to entertain it, and this has been sitting vacant, I think the school left five or six years ago. So to say, what's the rush? We've been waiting for this project, building to be developed for quite some time, we've got a developer who's very interested in trying to make something happen, who cannot sell it until he has site control. That's the rush.
Okay, any further discussion?
One question.
Roger.
Why, or who made the determination not to give Lewiston Housing the extension? And secondly, if they come back to the city in regards to this, why wouldn't we offer that extension to them?
I, I cannot go into detail, but council has been aware of the interest and chose not to pursue it, and I just can't go into greater detail because of executive session issues.
Okay. Shannon? Sorry. I just, I would like to ask my former planning, my, my, my folks, if we extend to the thirteenth, I just want to lift up what Lincoln said, as somebody who works with developers, works with business interests, works with housing interests, us saying quietly in a recorded but non-aired meeting, that's going to get no publicity over at all, shout out to the Sun Journal, if you're listening, nothing is going to happen between now and the thirteenth, unless there is something specific that you want the city staff to do. If you are looking for a continuance that's going to hopefully lead to expressed interest from developers, from the community, then that's a different, that's a, a different request, and we would want to be directive about that today, because you're right with your hundred-year tree analogy. But realistically, if we feel very strongly that all options are considered, and that that opportunity to redevelop that site is marketed smartly in a way that benefits the long-term economy and community of Lewiston, then we should give that express direction and recommend to dispose of it, so that those things can be pursued for which they cannot, whether, if we table it or if we recommend not, and city council follows that recommendation. That is very different than if we say, though I think we've got a pretty strict answer, if not a clear one, about why, why we might not be reconsidering a, an option with LHA, right? But I, I just say that because while I'm happy to wait two weeks and happy to have this discussion, I am a hundred percent sure we will be having exactly the same discussion, because there won't be anything new that happens. And so if we want something to be meaningful as a result of this dialogue and of whatever recommendation we're about to make, I would be making it within that context. We can ask staff to be specific, we could say, can you get a estimate on the cost of asbestos, and can you get a real estate estimate on the property value in this current market, and not some number that was three years old, and can you bring those forward on February thirteenth for a further discussion? Those are specific requests that we can make, that staff has the ability to enact that might impact our dialogue or recommendation next time. But a plea to the public at large to bring forward development options isn't going to happen, in part because they won't have access, control, or time to do anything meaningful that will change our discussion next time.
I certainly agree with what you're saying as far as adding on additional direction, and I would be willing to absolutely entertain a friendly amendment to, to this under the purview that you're mentioning, but ultimately, I do believe that staff has come before us very clearly that they want to sell the property, and they want to sell it to, to, to one developer. So that's, that's stated.
But our recommendation would be to city council and not staff.
Michael?
I think the first course of our action is to table, giving everyone a breather, giving advocates of their various positions here on the board, out in the audience, to the council, to take a look at other options, like, like it's been said a few times, looking at all options, and expressing a direction, which we can do more readily after a vote, hoping that the motion to table prevails would give us an opportunity to list out those asks to council and thereby staff. And just a reminder that motions to table are not debatable.
Okay.
So I call the vote.
Okay, in that case, Roger Dupree?
No.
You don't want a table?
No.
Okay. Joshua Dinajean?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Shannon?
No.
Christine?
Um. Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I say no. So it's four to three. So it is tabled to the third, to the thirteenth. And, okay, so can you, Shannon, can you articulate the, our reasoning and what we're looking to get from the city council or the staff?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think given the motion success just now, that my comments are really for staff, because as I understand it, city council will not take this issue up between now and when we've discussed it again on the thirteenth, is that right? Okay, then I would ask that the staff be prepared to discuss with us the best information available to you that you can gather in the next two weeks, that gives us a little more information, hopefully your guy, the former facilities guy, will have found his seven-year-old asbestos report. But it would be information about the current cost of asbestos with a back-of-the-napkin estimate on the cost for removal and demolition, and that you would work with a real estate professional to do a current market analysis of if that was not a city-owned property, I, Shannon owned it, what would I put it on the market for? What would be likely in this market for that, given the changes in, in the real estate market that has happened since 2019, and the increased interest in the Lewiston Auburn area's real estate market? So I'd want a current valuation of the property, and then we could do some math that might give us some different economics, perhaps the asbestos and tipping fees are ninety-eight thousand, and perhaps the real value of that property is seven hundred thousand, and perhaps we could then have a clear understanding of whether we should be making a disposition recommendation for highest and best use, or an RFP, or, you know, six months on the market, and not just to one person who hasn't participated in a market process. So some clear fees, some clear value. Okay?
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for participating, we're going, I'm going to, I need a five-minute break.
Yeah, I was just going to ask for that.
I need a five-minute break.
I would have made another motion about pretty much those things in a, in a table. Were friendly amendments in a, can we not? I got to read up on my Robert's rules, whatever.
I mean, I, it's, it's weird, because like, I guess I didn't have the ability to.
Alex, how are you? Roger Dupree? Oh, sure, sure, me. What's your last name, Alex?
Pine?
Okay. Which phone number, Alex?
Area code is three zero, um, three five seven, zero four zero.
Zero four zero four? What's your email?
C, C cap?
Period?
And then just my name, A L E X, I N E.
At what? Gmail? Good. You live here in Lewiston?
I do.
Where?
We're off of Main Street.
Oh, okay. We're on Rachel Boulevard, north of Old Green Road, office of Addis Street, Mineral Road Four.
I was on school board, asbestos was mostly taken out. I, I was on school board when that happened, and, and the oil tank and everything was taken out because we were allowed to go back in the school, okay? And I know that for a fact.
He and I used to discuss two things here and there, and what was going on at that time, seemed to be very interesting, you know, so. His, uh, term was.
But I can say. Can we have a public meeting next time?
And I was an associate, uh, began with, and then I moved up to permanent. It's been a long time. Back then, you know, it was a six-year.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, um, that's the, the, yeah, I've already called, but this.
So how many times have you done this before? Like, line by line?
No, I'm, I'm going because we need her in your house.
With you guys, with the planning board in general?
Yeah, we need all houses.
Six years?
No, for this one.
For what?
For this one, like, how many times, like, not, not just planning board, like, everybody.
Your personal?
Yeah, like, if you, I'm sure you went through it.
Oh, I go through everyone, I do grammar checks, ask Tracy how, you know, if something's up there and not up there, and vice versa.
But can't we do a different work and system?
Oh, no, totally. Totally, no, that even, that type of thing.
I'll, like, reprint. And I was thinking that too.
It's not centered right.
We have the signs and everything.
Doesn't mean I haven't missed things, but it's the attempt.
No, I, I agree with you, anyway.
I mean, they're excited for.
Can we get started, please?
Owen's saying it, okay.
We're taking on.
La Kip.
La Kip, yes. I suppose. La Kip, La Kip, okay.
La Kip for Lewiston.
Okay, so. Ms. Hunter?
Yes.
We listened to your presentation last time.
Yeah.
And then we, you, you received some questions from us.
Yes, and you received some responses.
Some responses from, from you, absolutely. Okay.
So typically, you know, if I could make some sejections.
Please.
We stick with the 2024 projects.
Right.
Okay, so we're on the same page there.
Yeah, yeah.
I would kind of, it may be easier just if I ran down, kind of giving you a flavor for where things, based upon the comment, based upon what we're seeing now, and, you know, with feedback from the departments, kind of massage some of the, the numbers a little bit, and as we hit a project, if there's additional questions or recommendations, that's, that way you guys can chime in, and hopefully that will be. Right now, we are in discussions with the city of Auburn on the airport projects and operations, and there's probably a bigger dialogue to go on there, so right now, it is staff's recommendation to defer all of these projects.
Okay.
So at this point, that's what we're looking at for all of these.
So nothing?
At this juncture.
At this juncture, okay.
That's a process point.
Yeah.
That helps.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
As we go about this, and Ms. Hunter, please, but do we, without having full debates on every line item, and maybe taking them by, by groups or by departments, comment options before we move on to the next item, and who would like to make that opportunity available to the planning board?
What?
I just, Kim, uh.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
I guess I lost my train of.
Wait, let's defer it. I also have a comment, so is there an ability to discuss by department at the planning board before we move on to the next?
Yeah, if you, if you want to, just, just lift your hand, just raise your hand, and I'll, and I'll recognize whoever, and then we'll move on. You have something, yes, Shannon?
I do, trying to do it the right way, but, thanks, yes, totally agree, would love to defer it, and with a note of capital improvement planning allocates planning, and it looks like a brain dump for one year, and that's a lot for them to do, bid, and execute, and so part of the feedback, I'm sure you're giving the airport, is the ability to tranche those projects out in those remaining blank years that, okay.
Reaching to the choir, to his defense. He is, he is a fairly new director, so he's still getting his feet wet, but yes, that would, that and the, and the school department would always be the goal on the five-year process.
Thinking, oh, yeah, absolutely, because that's what I was going to say. Anybody else? No? Okay.
Okay, so the next one is the transit system, right now, that comes out of fund balance, that's our local share, that's a placeholder, we do fifty thousand dollars a year for an even amount, so when we need a bus, it's not spiking the budget, so that's, you know, that's normal from that standpoint. On Tuesday night, the chief assessor will be presenting a presentation on the revow.
Oh, good.
Right now, based upon the demand and the number of parcels we have, we need more money, we're like a half a million dollar short. So at this point, you know, based upon, the first piece we had to do is wait until we did the new tax conversion. That is in place, you know, the bills that you receive for September and are soon to receive in March are on that new system. So that piece is done, and yes, I've called Public Works and Police, and nobody will be towing us, so, from that standpoint, he will be asking the city council, you know, do you want to do a supplemental appropriation, fund it now, get it started, and, and kind of continue that timeline?
Okay.
So as far as that one goes, it will be probably out of a fund balance, it will not be bonded, just because of what the purpose is for, so stay tuned on that.
Okay.
The canal ownership projects, that gives some flexibility there, we do have a Riverfront Island master plan that is making some recommendations, do we want to have seed money available? That may be something, let's see how all the projects shift out, and as we get closer to issuing the bonds, see what we want to do with that.
Would that canal rule be rolled over into the master plan, the master plan?
You would still need to fund it. The master plan that's going on now is funded to provide direction. So the next piece of that is to do more nitty-gritty design and fund those specific projects. So that's kind of the phased-in approach, we didn't want to not ask for anything, because then we skip a year, if you will, and that may or may not be advisable, depending on how the economy is going, how contracts are bidding, and so forth, but it was planned to at least start that if there was low-hanging fruit in that recommendation, to implement something.
Shannon?
Sorry, I'm sure this was covered at the riveting presentation that I missed in the joint meeting with city council, but can you break down the acronym slash colors? Federal, state is blue, and not really hitting our budget, then other and COB.
It is the last.
Is it all the way at the end?
Yeah, the next to last and last page at the very bottom, okay.
So, yeah, federal, state, other.
Right there, and then the page before is the first couple.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, so operating budget is COB?
Yes, city operating budget.
And so the actual request hitting, the capital improvement budget is?
Green, for city.
Thanks. Thank you.
So anytime you see a B, that's bond.
Okay.
Anything, time you see an O is operating, so the letter before tells you which funding, so it's either going to be water, stormwater, sewer, school, or city.
Okay, okay, thanks. Onward. Nope, just kidding. Michael, sorry.
So were we about to leave Economic and Community Development?
Actually, I think we were just leaving canals, projects.
Oh, just canals.
I haven't talked about Mill Five yet.
So there's no desire to push the five hundred thousand on canals?
There is no, is that, are you asking?
Yeah.
It's, it's premature at this point. Because I'd still like to have some money if the plan comes back with some low hanging fruit to really start generating some excitement on that.
Because I was just going to say, as a group, we got to get something moving and not just abandon everything.
Yes.
I meant to ask on the airport if there was some sort of master plan going forward.
Yes, there is.
Okay, that's all they need on that. And obviously, ones like Public Art Fund is operating budget two years out. But the, a few of the other ones go out all of the years. It's just repeating.
So can I bop down there and talk about those projects? Okay. So Mill Five is, is going to be one of those that we, we need to see if we can get some additional brownfield money. We need to see when the deadlines are. At some point, we're going to need to do something with this project and.
Right, aren't we, aren't we, some of that money have to be spent by September of this year?
Yes, and then, then we have some discretionary money. So that piece is going to take some, I would like to get one more piece of federal money involved because at that point, it takes it closer to being under a public referendum process.
Oh, yeah, otherwise we've got to go to referendums.
Exactly. So that's, that's the wiggle room that we're playing with on that one.
And if there was no.
Heather, is there a termination point for the brownfield fund?
Does Lincoln still, what, what's the termination on the first 500?
Right, we've got a $500,000 EPA grant, and I believe it was extended for a year, and I believe it's September, this coming September.
Right.
Is what it needs to be spent.
I mean, we can start doing some work. So we don't lose that money. But the overall work in the, in the big portion of the project, you know, we can, we can extend out a little bit.
Right, and we do have a million dollar federal earmark. Well, it's called, it's called a community development spending, I think now, CD, I can't think what the, bottom line, it's a million dollar.
Congressional discretionary.
Thank you.
Spending.
Count on the former finance director to remember those acronyms.
Yes, Michael.
And if there was no additional federal monies, it would be 9.8 million?
That's what we're still working on to resolve. I will offer that 2014, we issued and approved 2.5 million dollars. So there is an authorization outstanding already for the Mill Five. So that is something that we could tap into without having to do a second authorization. So we're negotiating all of that at this juncture. And it's just, it's going to see if we can grab at least one other grant maybe. And we're hunting right now for that other grant. Regarding the Public Art Fund, because I know that was mentioned for two years out, that is a fairly new group that was formed by the city council. They have some oversight on the public art to look at art, not only inventory it, but to see if there's any projects that need to be restored in any fashion, particularly, I know people have mentioned the zebra. So this provides them some seed money to get started until they've had a chance to enter, inventory everything and then come back with a real plan. That is going to be funded with, through the city operating budget.
I've got a stupid question. I don't know, Heather, if you can answer, or Lincoln, or anybody. Does anybody know what happened to all those lovely gears and things that was put in the river, you know, with what's now the Veterans Park that was, that nobody liked? I mean, but that, that we paid good bucks for?
I heard they were at Public Works somewhere.
That's the last I heard, too.
Yes, so.
I mean, you know, I mean, we paid for this thing. I mean, I'd love to see it reinstalled somewhere. I mean, I realize that people, people didn't like it. I did.
Not all people liked it.
Not, not all, you know, a lot of people didn't like it. I thought it was interesting because of the gears and, and the mills and, and.
Sure.
And that kind of thing. I thought it, it had a decent, a good concept, but a lot of people thought it was, and where it was, all, you know, back, what, 15, 20 years ago when they put that thing up, it, it was out of context. And, and I think it might fit better in some of the parks that we have now, which we could re-add it, resurrect it.
I will see if they can be located.
Didn't Museum LA take some of those?
I have no idea. This.
Yeah, it's been.
Every, I've heard a couple people mention gears, but this was even before my time.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. This was a long time ago.
Yeah, Lucy, I'm into my 23rd year and it predates me.
It predates you.
Predates me.
I thought it was my 70s.
Oh, I don't know. I'm just aging myself very much. Okay. Keep on, onward and onward.
You know, along with the Canal River Walk and the river, and the Riverfront Island Master Plan, both of those are going to be evaluated. I know Public Works is looking at the timeline of construction and seeing if both of those can be done, which are related to grants and, and seeing if any of those can be pushed back or delayed. The red shop, even though this is a bond issue or noted as a bond issue, if I can swing it, I'll probably fund it through fund balance because that has a development opportunity to it, and I don't want bonds attached to it because it jeopardizes our tax exempt status. But we do need to preserve it. So, you know, that's the piece. Either that or we're not going to have a red shop, so.
Right.
Are you saying that the Riverfront Island implementation, the Canal River Walk are combined, are connected?
They're, the, both the process of what we fund and how we do it are going to go through the same process.
Because I've been waiting a long time for the next phase of doing something down there, particularly the.
The canal, yeah.
The, well, actually, I'm probably more thinking the Riverwalk along the river, not necessarily along the canal. So I may not be thinking the same thing, but.
And have you tuned into any of the Riverfront Island public?
No.
Okay, so at the end of February, February 28th, Shelley?
Yes.
We're going to be having a joint presentation with the city council on this. So part of the things that you will see is some of the initial, like touch, you know, touch the water. So we may need to provide our package, the canal and the Riverfront Island and all of those together to determine what we want to do for our first unveiling of the project.
Because it's been a slowdown, probably because of COVID, since the amphitheater and the, the bridge, the walking bridge.
Yeah. The other thing with the Riverfront Island implementation and, and Island Point, we are looking at some land acquisition to kind of help us. And that is with our, one of our favorite landowners and it's, we're still negotiating. I've met seven times with him now, so it's been an adventure. The Ali sculpture, that is probably something that not only can be deferred to the following year, but may even be able to be scaled back. They have not even commissioned the statue yet. So they're still raising funds and that's probably an easy one to do. I'm sorry, Josh.
No, I was just going to, I was going to comment on that.
Okay.
Not, not just the, the deferral, but I think also because of the fact that, that Batesmo Five is still like in flux and, and the proposed location was, I think, Main Street, right? Like under the hopeful sign?
It's a viewings, it's a, that would build out a viewing that essentially faces the hopeful sign.
Right.
Slash future demolition or green brownfield site.
So if, if that art walk ever materializes along the canal, you know, where there's pieces everywhere that, that are, that are nice, but they're just not connected fully at this point, it seems like putting the Ali statue like on that busy road is not necessarily like the.
Right.
Yeah, so anyway, yeah.
It's a little premature. The thought is great, but it's a little premature.
It's a little premature, so very good. Yeah, absolutely.
So the destination amenities, this was a staff brainchild that I actually fully support. It allows us to look at things that we want to do that may be, and I'm using the expression low hanging fruit a lot tonight, but there, whether we light something, whether we do something with some of the events, it gives us that punch that we need to really kind of be on the map. This is something that I would look at funding through fund balance, recognizing it may be a one-hit wonder, you know, it may not be ongoing. So I certainly don't want to use bond funds for it.
Absolutely.
Main Street Fire Station is pretty much self-explanatory. We do, we are looking at construction. The, we have closed on the property. Ironically, we thought we were going to have to take the entire association's roadways and we, it looks like we don't have to do that. So that was good. We, we don't have any more of a liability than we thought. So we are moving forward with that. We have hired our own contractor to do a lot of the clerk of the works component in order to save some substantial money because that person can do not only the armory, but this project as well as the police fit out of Mill Seven. So.
Fantastic.
Yes.
And what does the 4 million represent?
The actual construction.
Construction of the building?
Yes.
So the land has already been purchased?
Land's already been purchased.
Right.
And I think we still have even a little chump change left even from that to roll into that. But we're still waiting on getting final bids and, and for the, so that may disappear really quickly.
Is it the same architect?
Um, the same architect, different construction company.
Same blueprints, right?
I'm sorry?
What was the same blueprints?
Aren't we going to a two bay?
It was essentially, I'm sorry?
Aren't we going to a two bay instead of a three?
Yes, so that's one thing, but the topography is a little bit different as well. So there's little tweaks on the design, but. You know, the lion's share of it is, is the same.
Good, fantastic.
Lewiston, Lewiston Technology, that's our annual requirement. One thing that I did talk to the IT director, we do have some wiggle room with the Microsoft Office replacement. So we may be able to push that out. So, and that's something, for the last two years, we've actually been able to roll this category into fund balance and not have to bond it. Comprehensive plan implementation, that's Dave, to kind of give him some seed money to, if he needs to bring additional help on, to roll out some of those goals and, and achieve some of the initiatives that you have, you all have been talking about. Canal Street parking garage repairs. What can you say?
You don't have to say anything. You've been in that garage.
Exactly. So most of the stuff in Public Works, I'm on those Public Works buildings. You will see most of them, you have the design, the first year construction, the second year. Depending on how much the design is, we'll be able to absorb that through fund balance before the constructions. As far as the roof membrane, as we keep pushing out, and I owe you the Public Works facility master plan white paper. Mary Ann has done it. I, I just need to take a look at it and I'll be sending that out to both you and the city council. So expect that. But as that keeps being pushed out, we're going to have to do something with that roof. So, I mean, I know it's 50,000, but in the whole scheme of things, if it buys us five or six years, it's worth it.
It's a nickel in the budget.
Heather, is they, are they still considering moving Public Works out to River Road?
That is one aspect of it, is to look at, there are some portions of the Public Works ops, operations that would be moved out there, fueling system, things like that. Whether the entire entity moves out there, that's probably still in the works.
Mm-hmm.
For discussion purposes. The fire alarm and the fires separation, we had USHA go through, and those were violations that they find. Those are life safety, so we have no choice in those. The armory space infrastructure, that's phase two of the armory, really looking at building out the locker room system, getting the office squared away. The beauty of doing that is one thing that we found when we had the shelter there during COVID, we were not able to use the downstairs at all between dampness, mold remediation bathrooms, yada, yada, yada. So they used the bathrooms at the middle school. That's how they made that work. It, you know, once we complete all this, that turns that into an emergency shelter again. So that is huge because right now, to have an emergency shelter, we need to use the schools.
Right.
And that may or may not be feasible in the future. Library elevator upgrade, yes, you're right. Whoever pointed that out, that it was 223 instead of 2024.
They just used the wrong page.
Well, no, they forgot the project and I asked where it was. So that, that was actually postponed from this year into next year. So we probably really need to look at doing that. That's a low enough ticket that depending on what the requests come through on the operating budget, that would be a candidate for fund balance because again, it's, it's small enough that we could swing that. Um, the fueling station and design, again, that's, you know, part of Roger's question on moving that. That has some regulatory requirements impending on that because we've got to get those tanks taken care of. Again, the window project, that city hall window replacement, I think this has been a project probably since I've been here. You know, it's an easy one to defer. The problem is, we're not saving any energy costs by deferring it. So at some point, we need to bite the bullet and, and do it. Security guards and cameras, oops, let me, yes, for the, the two, those are providing, right now, when they constructed the garages, the cameras were only at entrances and exits. They weren't in stairwells, they weren't in, and so this just provides a little more security within the garages. I know the city council did the supplemental appropriations to actually have a security firm go through the garages, and that's been extremely well received. This would allow, if we were need, a need to stretch those dollars out, at least we'd have more cameras in place to be able to look at those. And hopefully by then, the chips will kind of come back on cycle again.
I just had a quick question on, on that whole piece. So the cameras, are they viewable by the, by the security company? Or is it just the police department that can see?
It, it, right now, it's the police department. Public Safety has access and, and admin has access. And I believe Public Works facilities probably have access as well.
Yeah, that's it.
It is some, with them being on location, they really don't need to see unless, unless they want to alert us to something. And then we'd handle it anyway.
And this would allow us to, to eventually possibly take back the, the parking garages under city maintenance, or, or sorry, city monitoring as opposed to a third.
That would be the goal. I mean, the $50 question, and I know this goes back to Mike Markzot's council and, and parking garage entrance. At some point, the city's going to have to decide what they want to do with the parking garages. Right now, we have no department that really monitors everybody's, it's that, you know, ugly step person that kind of goes, it's been in finance, it's been in police, it's been in Public Works. We need to decide what we want to do. Do we want to have it, an outside firm manage it? What does that look like? Do we want to bring back, instead of attendance actually taking money, have attendance staff it? Instead of, you know, that's, that's a later discussion. How does that play a role with the kiosk and the parking meters? We need to flip that a little bit. And we've just, we're just trying to get the system up and running first before we start looking at, gee, Southern Gateway should be cheaper than all of our garages down there, just by sheer demands. And parking meters should be more expensive than parking garages. And right now, that's not the case. So it's kind of getting operationally the infrastructure in place to start making some of those strategic decisions. We have the CSO master plan, that's a regulatory requirement. Highways and most of those are routine. You'll see the list of street maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, that's included in there. Bridge Street was a carryover from the current year. Complete streets implementation, that's for grant money, as Mary Ann had put in the, we just received, it's a heads-up grant, I was going to say a raised head, but that's, it's a heads-up grant, that this provides our local match to that. So, you know, it's definitely worth budgeting some of those. Park Street and, and then we'll see some projects down below. Those are eligible for, some of them are eligible for CDBG funding, so that will be considered when they go through their process for. some of them are eligible for CDBG funding, so that will be considered when they go through their process for how they want to spend their, their money. MDOT, those are the bridges and, and our local share related to that. So we get down to the municipal garage. Again, some of those pieces, we may be able to roll in. Usually the equipments are lower dollar value, so we've been trying to squeeze some of those into fund balance, but keeping the big stuff, you know, at a bond, but we're shortening that bond life just to kind of get rid of it faster.
Oh, yeah, Heather, I just had one question about, and I'm not sure if this is the category that it's in, about replacing like dump trucks and pickup trucks and stuff like that. Do we sell those? Like, do we get income?
Yes, yes.
So we don't trade them in, we sell them?
It, we've done both.
Okay.
So we have an auction company that we work with that we have done quite well with the pricing on that. And then there are some vehicles that the auction company is fairly honest with us and said, hey, if, if they're willing to give you that for a trade, take it and run. So, you know.
And then where do those proceeds go?
Those go into sale of surplus property, so it rolls into general fund, fund balance.
Peru can use a few dump trucks, blow trucks.
I noticed, oh.
Yeah, go ahead, Alex.
I noticed in the comments, there's, what is it, six pickups, two, two and a half ton, two and three quarter ton and two electric. Are those electric cars or?
We are starting to consider those. If we're going to do that, we need some electric charging stations installed, so. Other way, you know.
That's my professional life right there, so.
So the good news is, the grant opportunities for charging stations and things like that are just huge, so.
Oh, yes.
That's not our major concern. It's, it's buying those and look, and seeing how they work before we start looking at switching.
Fleets.
Entire fleets over.
Yeah.
I didn't see it in a cursory glance under the sidewalk maintenance and rehab spots. Where, and we might not have gotten to it, so please forgive me, where would we see improvements for upgrades to intersections? That's not just maintenance or rehab?
Yes, that is.
Was it somewhere buried in page seventy or seventy-two, or is it in like a different?
Complete streets implementation. Sixty-eight.
And is that?
On page sixty-eight, I should say.
Does that, um, will that address the, so there was, oh, you'll know the name of it, or you guys might too. After Jaden's passing.
Yep.
There was a review of a number of key intersections and crosswalks that prioritized a number of areas.
Yep.
Well, maybe, will you just, will you just say out loud to me and make me feel good that the tier one priorities as listed on page sixty-nine are in line with that? Because I guess when I was scanning this, I didn't see Eastern, East Ave and Lisbon Street as an intersection and yet we've had three pedestrian deaths in two years. That would indicate maybe that's an area that needs.
Yeah, we're looking at the state paying for those.
Okay.
That's the, or ATRAC money. One of the things that I suggested to Mary Ann, because you're right, nowhere on this list do you know what's been done. So next year, you know, truck down through there and say, done, done, done. You know, waiting for DOT, you know, so you have a better option, but that's exactly where this money's targeted.
And that list came from?
The report.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, so according to my thumb, we're down to open spaces. So we have a lot of our trail extensions related to that. So Samar Payne relates to the grant work and, and the other discretionary grant that we did receive. Sunnyside Trail is one that clearly could be eligible for CDBG funding. River Road, the turn lane, one could argue that that could be pushed. It's, it's not needed five days a week, but on that sixth day, it's really needed. And that's the Saturday mornings, the turn in.
Right.
So I think she's gonna see if she can get quotes, if this is, you know, a really good number. You know, we'll see where we, how it shifts in the game plan. Otherwise, that may be something that gets deferred at that point. You know, we've been dealing with that for years. One year may not, may or may not make a difference on that.
Any implementation or deferring, it just feels like there's a couple of other budget items that we've talked about that might or might not see significant improvement or might or might not take heavy traffic that is currently coming out of a downtown site and put it out on River Road and maybe the three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars we invest in that is four feet too narrow for bigger trucks. So if we spend that money, can we spend it with an eye to the potential for traffic? If we do spend it in this year and prior to knowing kind of how the bigger Public Works plan and shifts might play out? Just because it would probably have some crossover impact?
No, it's not in the same area.
No.
No, the, 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 uh, dump is here and, and where the Public Works is, is, is down on River Road.
It's further down.
Around the corner.
Ah, the, where I get my dirt, my sand?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep, appreciate that. I know that spot.
Yeah, well, yeah, most of us do.
Five gallons at a time.
Okay.
The street lights and traffic signals, you know, unfortunately, those are super, super expensive, but we are way behind on upgrades on those. So, you know, Dan's taken over that job, uh, two years ago now? And, you know, really has put together a plan, so we're trying to fund this as much as possible and package money. A lot of what we've been able to package to date, with the exception of really big projects, we've been doing out of fund balance.
Good.
The school.
It's not all in one column and that's exciting this year.
Yes.
Yeah, but of the last two columns, there's nothing, hardly anything there.
So I will offer, the tennis courts were splitting. After that, some of his projects, you saw the, the school's response to that. I think they're gonna be coming back with recommendations after their facility group meets and seeing what they, they can defer and, and move forward with that and what can be still funded under their version of the ARPA money. And see if we can carve a little bit off of that. Or do we, instead of dividing the high school, for example, in half to replace the roof, do we do it in quarters? Or do we do it in thirds or, you know, something like that? That's what they're evaluating now. And then from the utility standpoint, most of those are either routine or regular, regulatory required or some combination thereof. The rehab mains, you know, you're gonna get that in sewer as well as water. The inspections and, and the equipment replacement programs, those are their annual request for their rotation of their equipment. The pump station and generator replacement, that's on an annual rotation. We've started including generators in there because those have significant generator requirements and we had two burned out in midstream and we didn't have. So as we're replacing everything, we're doing the whole, everything all at once to get that taken care of. And the same thing works with the storm drains. I'm happy to say we're, you know, we're getting towards the tail end of Gully Brook. It seems like Gully Brook has been on the LCIP for probably twenty years straight, so. Shannon, I'm sorry, Shannon, did you?
Just said forever. Sorry.
Yes, forever, yes. And then you have the water pump stations, obviously they have a little bit of a bigger line item because of, they're not as many, but they're, they're larger from that standpoint. So that's kind of the rundown.
Amy?
Does I have a question about the meter program? Those are the water, the smart meters for water?
Yes.
So I just wanted to remind folks, or David probably can help me remember, when we did the rental registration program, that was a really, really big ask from multifamily owners.
Yep.
To get those installed and, you know, I, I have received some heart-stopping water bills that I just want to point out. So what this would do is it would be, it would like send an alert if the water usage was above your normal use, like instantly, instead of waiting for the end of the quarter to find that a toilet's been running and it burns a ton of water and it costs a ton of money when this happens. The city's been great about refunding money, like if it, if you can prove that you fixed the problem. But I would just, that would be a huge help to a lot of people if you could get those smart meters bumped up.
Yeah, unfortunately, with the delay and some of the chips and everything, that delayed pretty much the whole program.
Yeah.
As we're finding out with pretty much anything related to technology, but yes, that's still in the plan.
Okay.
For the operating budget.
Okay, great.
Okay, Shannon?
Sorry, Mr. Merk, I was gonna hand it over to me, I was just blocking it.
All right, Mr. Merk.
Combined sewer.
Yes.
That's an annual thing going on and probably never ends. Where is that in this lineup?
Combined sewer is on the previous page. It's not with the other ones and it really should be. So if you look on page twelve, halfway down the page, the only thing we have for CSO is for the master plan.
Uh, Jepson, uh, storage at Jepson.
That's not until twenty-five.
Yeah, that's the storm water directly, but as far as CSO.
So they're not doing any projects on?
They're doing, as it relates to the storm water piece, but through the, the separation, that's only through storm water now. The, the CSO project is just maintaining that, the planning of the EPA application and, and the certification with that.
So there's no actual projects to combine going forward?
To uncombine would be in the storm water area, yes. And this year, there's no specific ones. It's mainly Gully Brook and, and Jepson.
And even though this is twenty twenty-five, the redundant water transmission main installation, is that these extra line coming from?
Yes, the, and then the reason why it's twenty twenty-five is because the ARPA money is covering the first under the bridge area in the design and cost a pipe.
And that's happening twenty twenty-four?
That's happening right now.
Right now.
We ordered the pipe, we're doing the design now.
So that's twenty-three and twenty-four?
Mm-hmm.
So are we doing, I, I was vaguely recall that the walking trail would be built under the bridge when they were, they're doing this?
Yes.
Is that what, they're still gonna be combining that?
That's still the game plan, yes.
Okay, fantastic. Josh?
I'm not sure I'd be walking under it, but that's the game.
That's neither here nor there. That's, be there.
I was just gonna notate that that would make the Heritage Park accessible by foot and then kind of mitigate that left hand, that right hand turn, which is kind of really dangerous for people anyways.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Shannon?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and then I'll, I'll.
Go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. That was very illuminating. Really missed, sad I missed the big show. But most of what you offered us as we walked through was a little bit of deferrals and a lot, there was no like, except maybe the airport. What, what is the, you know, every year that we go through this exercise, part of that exercise is recognizing, here's the gap that would be bonded, here's our ability to manage debt relative to the total amount requested and what would be bonded, and we're in a really awesome high interest rate scenario right now. And so, and I mean, it would be really easy to be like, compelling case, we recommend all of it. Send that on to city council. Is that fiscally responsible? And what, if anything, would you have us recommend for areas that city council take a second look?
So, from my standpoint, I think the departments are currently going through and vetting what can realistically be postponed without a lot of hardship. So that's the first piece. The other piece, with the audit wrapped up now, we are able to see what areas we have excess bond proceeds and interest, accumulated interest. Tracy's going through that right now. So as you might recall, when we do the bond authorization, part of that authorization includes some budget transfers as well. And it says XYZ project are gonna be funded through surplus bond proceeds and bond premium. So that allows us, in lieu of issuing new debt, to defer that. Right now, we are in a very good position from a fund balance standpoint to probably better than we've been in past years. And we've been in a darn good position in the past years to move some of that stuff over. That would be my recommendation is to, but I need to see what the departments are asking for in the operating budget. But we have a lot of great flexibility for that. So if I were looking at a recommendation, unless there's some project that is truly giving, you know, you as a board, heartburn, is, you know, funding as much through the operating budget, second tier is fund balance, third tier is bonds, but make sure it's, you know, absolutely necessary, given this rate environment and so forth. And get as close to our narrowing that bond eighty percent limit as possible, that gap. That would be my, and believe me.
Yo, I know you're.
I, I never, my finance director never really, you know, has been buried. So that piece, you know, will, is, is my forefront and the intention as well. As a reminder, just so you know, is we don't usually issue bonds until at least a year, if not two years after the approval because of the spend down requirements. So right now, even though it's a higher rate environment, the year we're getting ready to sell is kind of a skinny bond year. So it's a, it's a good thing. So it'll be interesting to see what the Fed's gonna do tomorrow and, and.
Quarter point, just a quarter point.
That's what I'm hoping, but again, it gives us some leeway if this happens to be one of a higher year from a bond request to say, all right, how do we want to package that deal? Do we want to package it all at once? Do we want to wait two years if we have the, the cash flow and, and?
Rates will come down.
Exactly. So that gives us that flexibility to kind of pull the trigger when we need to. We can pretty much, from start to finish, sell a bond in ninety days. By the time, and that's on the open market, that's not through the bond bank.
Roger?
Heather, a question. We have an epidemic in the city and it's a safety issue. People are running red lights. Years ago, we had the traffic cameras situated in various locations where they had high traffic. Was that run by the city or was that run by the state?
I don't know, but I can find out.
I think it was AVCO, actually.
Yeah, I, I know there were some.
They did it with Auburn. They had them both in Auburn and those at the same time and they moved their cameras from one intersection to another.
Yeah.
They weren't all signaling, they weren't all camered at the same time, they would move them to various locations.
Was that research?
Is it possible that somebody can look into getting those things back in here? Because every day, every day, there's people going through red lights, four and five at a time. I mean, this is ridiculous. If somebody's gonna get hurt and somebody's gonna get killed real, real quick. And I think that's something that we should look into.
I put it on the list, so yeah, I, I can get back to you.
It's bad. I mean, you know, you can say, well, you know, you go through the yellow light, but I mean, like Roger says, I mean, you'll see people, the light is, is red and there's still two, three, four cars are just going, they don't care. And yeah, so it'd be nice if we could reinstate that.
Okay.
Okay, let's, Josh?
I just, I had a question on that. When's the last time we, we did an analysis of, of the timing of our lights? Have we, have we done that recently?
Um, that's what Dan is working on now.
Because I think that may help.
Yes.
No, they're still going.
Red is red.
I'll tell you, you've got thirty seconds of yellow going up Pine Across Webster. And I know this because I've stopped for that to have yellow light more times than I can count. And then there are like two or three other lights within, you know, three blocks of my house that you don't have a third of the yellow time. Like I've literally hauled on my brakes. You know, three cars back, it's yellow, then it's red and there is some validity to, how are those lights working? Because they're not consistent.
There's, yeah, there's a couple of them that I can think of, that the green is actually less timed than the yellow.
Yeah, bananas.
Okay, uh, did you have something?
Yeah, but I can go last.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I was just going to close this out.
That's what I figured. I would like to say something before I close it out, sorry. Just, I, I appreciate that guidance because I, I know that any of us who've done this before always sit here with heartburn over how do we? always sit here with heartburn over how do we prioritize this? And with our particular purview of, you know, thinking about long-term planning for the city, for its residents, for how quality of life is and for the economics. And you mentioned this a couple of times in your description today, but I would just kind of emphasize from my perspective, for whatever conversations happen internally and with city council, I think there is a lot of momentum building behind the city and the opportunity for some smaller investments that have a very public impact for residents who live here and that draws people to here to visit. The timing is really important and the long-term payoff of relatively small dollars is really important. And those are the walkability pieces and those are some of the interactive and the maintenance. And I don't know where the public restrooms are in here, but I'm hoping it's a line item somewhere that was quietly snuck in. But we, we need those kind of amenities to show up as the community that we are and that we talk about. And those were, we didn't blink at $2.4 million every single year as a capital improvement bond for sewer. And then we have huge discussions about $200,000. Nobody sees those sewer pipes. When some, if your neighbor's got a backup, you're gonna hear about it, otherwise not. And in the residents' comments today in the open public comment section and in almost every one, there is an artificial divide about, and it's inaccurate, and I'd love some data on this, but the amount of taxpayer dollars invested and how there is some who perceive that certain rural areas of the community pay the taxes to support all these amenities. And realistically, we know that the density in the taxpayer dollar per road frontage from downtown businesses and residences, multifamily or owner-occupied, are subsidizing those huge lines that we saw in water and sewer. And that is a good investment, but I just want that to be considered in the whole and context of what investing in the Riverfront Island Master Plan is or the canals or the walkways or some downtown bathrooms for events would be really important. And so it's really easy to cut $100,000 and not to be able to see the long-term kind of return on it, but it's a really important time for those investments for the city.
Agree.
David?
Just a, I guess a comment, maybe, given the history of the board and a question for Heather. So we're $17 million over, right?
Yes.
And what's the magic number? It's 80 percent.
That was my question.
So if you turn to...
And I'm asking this question because you folks have made it challenging in the past. Maybe not you folks, but this board.
So if you turn to page 128.
It's us, Dave. It was us.
And my quick math of the ones that Heather's, I think, said that are obvious, I think you're at $3.2 million, so.
Yes, there's still a significant, significant gap, no doubt about it. So the piece that I need to get with is the school department. You know, I need to see where they're at. And as we got the little surprise email this morning from Mr. Damon, we got some of these feedback on the answers that were not real helpful in their detail that I need to go back and revisit with them and say, all right, guys, you know, what are you looking at here, seriously? So...
Yeah, I mean, they, they need to do some...
It can't always be from the city side.
No, 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 no. And, and, you know, they've got to realize that they have to do some plan ahead, you know, like the sign. They, they just do that all the time. And, and I think we've been telling them that the last few years, very...
The message has been delivered.
Yes, I, I realize, but they don't do anything about it.
I, I, I...
You know, and this is what's frustrating. It's, I'm sure it's frustrating as heck for you too. But, you know, yeah, so, I mean, we really need, they, they need to calm down on, on their requests as much as the city side has to. I mean, you know, it can't always be for the children. I mean, you know, I have kids, they went to school. But, you know, it can't always be, oh, it's for the children. Well, I like kids, but, you know, how about it's for the elderly? You know, it'd be nice if they wouldn't, we wouldn't be throwing elderly people out on the streets and living in, you know, tents. I mean, I realize it. But there are a lot of people that are hurting. And, and as we heard earlier, I mean, Metta View is the only out-of-town elderly housing. And it's, like they said, 50 years old, it's gotta be pushing, you know. So we have to start being more proactive in, in other areas, not just in the school. I mean, like I say, I mean, I, I love kids, but there are other areas in the city that, that need looking at as well.
I will suggest on...
13.
March 14th is the budget presentation. But I believe on that same night, the president of the Lewiston Senior Advisory Committee is bringing a presentation from AARP on having Lewiston be an AARP community. So if you don't at least attend that night, you might want to zoom in that night and, and stream it just to see, I'm anxious to see what they're, what they're gonna say and kind of what their recommendations are.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, to move forward for that. Because it is, it is definitely a relevant topic.
Right.
With what's been discussed tonight.
Okay, 13, okay. Any other, Michael?
The $24 million, which is $17 million over.
Yep.
I suspect that that does not cover the utility bo...
No, that's, the utility funds, none of the utility funds are part of the debt limitation.
Because I couldn't find the 24 anywhere else, but I could see 32 and 39, so...
It's the, it's the city school together.
City and school.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And we'll see what we can come up with some recommendations. We will be discussing that at the 13th, won't we?
Yes.
Okay. So initiation of various ordinance changes. We don't have any details, so that's, that's the line item on, see?
Yeah, so we do have, sorry, I grabbed the wrong packet. Hang on. I do have a memo.
That's all right, I've got it in here somewhere, I'm sure.
Yes. Yeah, so I did put a memo together on that. So in addition to the various baskets that we're working on, I do have a whiteboard that continues to have things that get jotted on it as we notice them. So that's what this list is, some of those items. A few of them, after we'd written this memo and distributed it, we realized they probably were under some of the baskets that you already initiated. But a few ideas, one of them is to have an article that actually lists each of the contract zones and provides that language instead of having them kind of in their own separate place on the website, but in a, in a spot in the ordinance. We do have some changes we'll need to make at some point to the noise regulations. In further discussion with staff, it sounds like it's more involved than I had originally thought, so I'm not sure how soon that would be coming to you. So I don't know if you want to hold off on that one. The third item here, the development review language, we think that's actually under some of the baskets already that you had initiated about, you know, making it more user-friendly and so forth. We think that that kind of falls within that. The home occupation language, we think that would be good to have you move forward. Number five was something that, you know, there's been discussion that the board has had about the need for more accessible housing. And so we did, there was a suggestion made that perhaps there could be some incentives to allow greater height or other things that would allow a developer to be able to add the cost of an elevator to a building. So we could create some incentives, so we wanted to float that idea. And then finally, amendments to definitions, that's probably also already been part of the baskets that you've initiated. So, sorry, it's a little bit of a hodgepodge, but that was some items that I was thinking we could bring in the near future. And so I guess the question is whether you want to initiate any of that. So that was, that's the discussion.
Okay. Josh?
I just had a question on, you're saying that right now, home offices are not permitted in commercial zones?
No, home occupations.
Home occupations.
Home occupations.
So we have, so we've actually, there's some spots, I believe, downtown residential is one, certainly Suntraville. There's a couple of our downtown commercial zones where you can't have a home business, but retail is allowed use. So it just doesn't make a lot of sense for someone who like lives in an apartment and wants to, you know, do whatever they want to do as a home business. Maybe not, you know, retail, we don't allow as a home business, but, you know, there's all sorts of other things you can do. It just doesn't make sense that it's not allowed. I, I feel like it's like an oversight where, I don't even know how that happened in our code. I don't, yeah, David doesn't know either, but it's, it's something that people have asked and we've had to say no and we feel like idiots saying no.
Yeah, right. So, so where you, so you're looking for us to do, so we would be looking at contract zones?
Yep.
Expanding home occupations, creating incentives for the elevators?
Yes.
And the other, the other two are kind of already in the mix? Development review and amendments to definitions?
Yes.
Or do you want us to, to do them all? It sounds like approving all of them.
You could, it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, what, yeah, let's, let's do that. Why don't we approve them all? And that way, it, it, you know, if something fell between the cracks, we won't let it fall between the cracks. Shannon?
I will be happy to make a motion, I just want to put a quick plug in. As you talk about number five, I think it is both installing an elevator and multifamilies, but much like we're seeing in the multi-site development for choice, there's ADA accessibility built into first floor, even in the buildings without elevators. And when I think about the language changes we've done to setbacks and with, with some of our own requirements, plus the historical architecture form of the rise, would an ADA ramp count against a setback? And what kind of incentives might count for accessibility when you're looking at a triple-decker or a four-square and you don't need an elevator? But half or a third of those units could be accessible if we just thought about some of those basic accessibilities? So just encouraging you to think broadly. I'll make a motion.
Absolutely.
Sorry, thanks. I'd like to make a motion to initiate code amendments summarized in this memo pursuant to Article 7, Planning Board Powers and Duties, and Article 17, Amendment Section 5b1c.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Josh? Okay, any further discussion? Roger?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yep.
Christine?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucy, yes, okay?
Great.
So let's do that. And, okay, I would entertain a motion to adopt the January 10th minutes.
Oh, can I jump in first?
Yes.
There's one more item on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay. So, and I didn't provide anything in the packet because this was really sort of a discussion for staff to bring to your attention. And then if the board wants to take action, I have a motion written that I can provide to you. So we, so on December 12th, the Planning Board made a recommendation to the council on a number of ordinance changes. And one of them had to do with the design Lewiston standards, where as you recall, we were cleaning up some issues with removing the term yard. There were just, it was just a couple pages.
Yes.
So we, oh, and also the, not the impervious surfaces, but the other one, what was the other thing?
Lot coverage.
The lot coverage ratio, we were eliminating that as well. So when that went to the clerk's office to go on the agenda, Kathy Monteau came back and said, I think that this is the Planning Board that adopts this, not the council. And staff went, oh, and she's right. So in Article 13, which is the Development Review section of our code, Section 6 states, and I'll just grab that and read it to you for your own curiosity so you know I'm not crazy about this, I mean, I may be crazy. Sorry, just a minute here. So Article 6, which is Site Plan Review and Design Guidelines, says, "The Planning Board shall," and this was adopted in November of 2020, right around the time that the council adopted the design standards. So this may have been a discussion that some of you remember that you were involved with. I don't know if the council said, hey, why are we adopting this? This is more of a Planning Board thing, I don't know. But here's what it says. "The Planning Board shall adopt, on the recommendation of the Planning Director, Site Plan Review and Design Guidelines. The Site Plan Review and Design Guidelines contains two distinct components. One, citywide design guidelines, which shall be advisory in nature unless specifically stated otherwise. And two, design district standards, which are required unless specifically stated otherwise. Applicants for all Development Review projects shall consider and incorporate said guidelines into the preparation of applications. The Planning Board and Staff Review Committee shall consider said guidelines in evaluating appropriate design solutions to specific situations." So when we read that, we said, oh, okay, clerk's office, thank you, we'll talk to the Planning Board. So it didn't go to the council for adoption in January with the other items. And so the recommendation from staff is that you would make a motion to adopt the Design Lewiston Site Plan Review and Design Guideline standards as reviewed by the Planning Board on December 12th, 2022 pursuant to Article 13, Development Review and Standards, Section 6. So I'll bring that over to the chair.
So moved.
If the board wants to...
Yeah, well, no, let's just say so...
So moved, we're not gonna read that again. So moved and enter in the record. Yeah.
And, and do we have a second? Josh, okay, Amy? And further discussion now? Roger?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Michael?
I'm staying.
Okay, Shannon?
Yes, please.
Christine?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucy, yes. So that's six to one, six to zero, one abstention.
Okay.
Okay, so they're passed.
Great, thank you.
Basically, you guys have the jurisdiction over those, the council doesn't.
Okay, so that's, that's...
There's one thing!
All right, I will entertain a motion to adopt the January 10th minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Roger.
Roger?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yep.
Christine?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lucy, yes. And motion to adjourn, so.
Good question.
Yeah, sure.
David, is there any progress in regards to the Pickering House?
That's what you asked that, we were just talking about that today because Economic Development's doing an update. They have their historic tax credits, I believe they are working on the, their construction plans now. And I was gonna ask Lincoln Ramesby today if we knew when they were planning on submitting. The last I heard of it is gonna be sometime spring, early summer where we might get some building plans.
Okay, for which property check is this, I'm sorry?
The Pickering House.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
That's in the Continental Mill.
Right, right, okay.
Seventy units or seventy-two.
Yeah, something like that, right, right? Fantastic.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn. Do you have a second? Josh, all those in favor? Okay, see you on the 13th.
Thank you, everyone.
Oh, no, my calendar's in here, I'm gonna sit, I'm gonna sit and update my, my calendar at home with all the meetings.
So Lucy, I remember the difference of opinion on the downtown residential, I remember why it was so important to me.